Good evening. But he does. I'm here to help. But I'm still, so, uh, he's right on the way. So I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Texas Southmost College District. And here this evening with us are Dr. Dolly Zimmerman, Dr. Roberto Robles, Mr. Ramon Dino Espaza, and, uh, Mr. Eduardo, um, and Dr. Julia Garcia. And David Olivetta is going to be late. Now, the board, I would like to convene us into an executive session as provided by Government Code, Chapter 5, 5-1.
Could I suggest that we have, uh, we have one speaker?
Yes.
And she's, she's...
Well done. Well done.
All right. I guess I'll have to turn it over to Chairman.
She started right on time.
Yeah. I'm sort of late.
I was stuck in, uh, traffic. So they later called me from, uh, from some airplane saying, "I'll be there by six o'clock." I said, "Okay." So, thank you for being here.
She has convened a meeting. And before we go into executive session, may I suggest that we have our one speaker that's here, that has signed up to speak? Uh, and it is dear item number, uh, let's see, four, Speaker to Agenda Item.
Number four, okay. Um, right, who's our speaker? That is Mr. Miss...
Sonia Cunningham.
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 Member of our nursing faculty.
Ms. Cunningham, come on up, please. Ms. Cunningham.
Good afternoon, Dr. Garcia, members of the board, and people in the audience. Thank you so much. I'm here again. And I'm here because I'd like to invite everyone here to Keith Race Number Two on April 14th, uh, 2007. And the race is going to kick off the celebration for the College of Liberal Arts for their 15th anniversary. So I hope everyone will come out and help us to raise funds to support education. Just a little update, um, Keith Race, we've had two in New York already, and this will be the second one here, and the fund is really doing well. I have moved on past the endowed scholarship now to an endowed chair, and I could still remember in my mind... The day that I was standing next to Dr. Garcia, and I was dabbling, and I thought, "Oh, I'm gonna do an endowed chair." And then I thought, "Oh, my God, what did I say? I must be nuts." Well, it's honest way, and I can say, not only it's honest way, but this is really interesting. At my age, I was able to secure funds, and trust me, I'm old, uh, to make sure that just in case I'm not here tomorrow, that this endowed chair is created. And I think that that has just made me feel so much better, because this is my journey. And people may say they want to do it, but I don't know if they're gonna help me. So I just had to go out and do this. And I've learned so much about fundraising. And I urge all of you out there, um, to, uh, celebrate the lives of the people that you love by supporting education. So, I would like to see you on April 14th, and if you want to really have fun on August 5th in New York City, across the Brooklyn Bridge, my race is the only race that's committed to go across the Brooklyn Bridge. And I'm happy to say that I've had several people here, Richard Carmago has been to the race, I've had several people come to New York just to go to the race, Marilyn Woods has been there. So I look forward to seeing you. You can email me at Sonia Cunningham at UTB dot EBU. And please, come out and join us, okay? On the 14th. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, what energy and enthusiasm we thank you. Sonia, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So now we, uh, convene into executive session. Thank you. The board will now convene into a regular session. We move on to item number two on the agenda. Uh, I need a motion for, I ask for a motion to adopt the resolution concerning a 28 exodus in Nueva Canyon, Mexico. Motion's made by Dr. Robles.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Dino Espaza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. Next issue is the, a contract and resolution for the purchase of the front 19.7 feet of Lot 4, Block 5 in the Paleros Edition in Brownsville. Motion again's been made by Dr. Robles.
I'll second the motion.
Second by, uh, Dino Espaza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? May. Motion carries. Next, uh, is a contract and resolution for the purchase of Lot 11, Block 16, Colonial Alta Vista in Brownsville.
Look to approve the contract.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dino Espaza. Second by Ms... Second by Ms., uh, Breedlove. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. Uh, next contract and resolution for the purchase of Lot 32, Block 12, in the Colonial Alta Vista subdivision in Brownsville.
I can move.
Mrs. Breedlove has made a motion, and second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. Uh, next contract and resolution for the purchase of the Fort Brown VS Unit, uh, 6F, Section 2 in Brownsville. Motion made by Ms. Zimmerman, second by Ms. Breedlove. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, agenda item is a contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown Villa Unit 8A in Brownsville. May I have a motion?
I can move.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Espaza, second by Dr. Robles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the, a contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown Unit 5C in Brownsville, Unit 2. Have a motion?
I can move.
Ms. Breedlove has made a motion, second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. And the final real estate issue is the contract and resolution for the purchase of Fort Brown Unit 7B in Brownsville, uh, and I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I can move.
Motion made by Ms. Breedlove.
Second.
Second by Dr. Roberto Robles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion carries. We now move into item number three, is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of the first of February of this year.
I don't just shuffle through the...
Ms. Breedlove has made a motion to accept the minutes as proposed. Second by Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Then motion carries. Uh, we go to item number five, is the board briefing on the UTB TSC Anniversary Celebration. I'll ask Dr. Ruth Ann Ragland to, uh, please, uh, introduce our speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Dr. Garcia. It's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight a person you already know very well, Dr. Olivia Rivas. She's worn many hats at UTB TSC over the years.
There she is.
Today, she's wearing her hat as Chair of the Anniversary Committee for our 15th and 80th anniversaries. Dr. Rivas is known for providing assistance whenever and wherever she's needed, and she does it with grace and enthusiasm. She's an alumna of TSC. She's a former Dean of Students at Texas Southmost College. She was the first Vice President for Student Affairs when the partnership was established. She also has served as Acting Dean of the School of Business, and she now is a professor and the Chair of School Specialties in the School of Education. And in her, in addition to all of these duties of teaching and chairing an academic department, she's our Anniversary Chair. Her bachelor's degree is in Political Science from, uh, UT Pan Am. She has a master's in Counseling and Guidance from UT Pan Am, and she receives her doctorate in Counseling and Guidance from Texas A&amp;M in Commerce. She completed postdoctoral work at Harvard and at Oxford University in England. She and the Anniversary Committee have already led us in a variety of activities and events for a celebration of our anniversary, and there's more to come. Dr. Rivas.
Well, good evening, uh, board members, and President Garcia, and colleagues in the audience. Um, I'm really pleased to come and give you a briefing on anniversary. We have been celebrating anniversary for, uh, quite, uh, a few months, and I'd like to begin to give you kind of a little bit about how we started, what we've done, and what's yet to come. What you see up there now is the theme for our anniversary celebration, and the theme is coming of age. We are celebrating TSC's 80th Birthday and UTB's 15th Birthday. And of course, when you see 15, it was just natural for us to say, "This is the quinceañera of the partnership." And so we've, uh, woven in then quinceañera traditions into, um, the partnership. And you have, I think we distributed some bumper stickers that have then the coming of age, uh, theme. And we were very fortunate last, um, last spring to have Carmen Lomas Garza on our campus. Carmen Lomas Garza had a quinceañera print that is currently on display in a museum in Chicago. And in conversation with President Garcia, she volunteered then to be a part of our celebration by allowing us to use her print as our anniversary poster. And we have posters that, um, are, that look like this. They're beautiful. And every time I look at them, I see something different, because they all have like a little story. You know, the little kids picking up the dress, La Abuelita fixing the, uh, the daughter. And of course, look at the proud father in the car with the quinceañera. So they're just wonderful, um, wonderful prints.
What is, what is this lady reaching for?
Oh, they're just there.
Is it? No, no, no. She's reaching for something.
Which one?
She's there.
Oh, well, I don't know. Están jugando, estando haciendo. I think the word is estando there. I'm not sure. One of those. But look at the little girl. Look at the little girl at the bar top holding her skirt up, you know, like as if she had also a party dress. That's a wonderful, um, print. And that is our anniversary poster. And Carmen Lomas Garza will be at our quinceañera gala and will be signing autographing these posters to, uh, folks who purchase the posters. But also, we have, um, she has made available to us 15 of her original or rather limited edition fine prints, uh, that she has autographed that are in, of course, much larger dimensions that we are going to give as gifts to the sponsors for our quinceañera gala. And I'll talk about that in just a moment, a little bit further. Um, the way we decided to celebrate, uh, this year, we put together a schedule of events, and we decided to celebrate by school or college. And I must tell you here that every dean and the faculty within that school or college have taken ownership of the celebration for their particular school and college. And for other activities like Diamonds Among Us and, um, the Quinceañera Gala and others, we have been very lucky to get volunteers from the community, and in particular, the Development Board members have been very active in planning some of our, um, schedule of events. But we did begin September then, uh, we had our opening ceremony, and we did that, um, out in the front lawn. It was a really nice ceremony where we rang the chimes, the chimes that rang for the first time during the partnership. And they're reminiscent, of course, of those who helped us, uh, in the partnership. And I'm thinking in particular of Mrs. Ekoff, who, um, when I think of the chimes, I think of, of Mrs. Ekoff. So at just the appropriate time, the chimes rang, um, just beautifully all over campus. But during the opening ceremonies, we had a speaker, excuse me, a young lady who came here as a student the first year of the partnership, 15 years ago. And 15 years later, today, she is an OB-GYN, um, practicing in, in Brownsville. And she talked about, had it not been for this partnership and her ability to earn her degree in chemistry, um, her family's from Atamuros, we're not gonna let her go anywhere. So the opportunity to finish that here allowed her then to go on. Her name is Claudia Garcia. She did her, um, studies at UTMB, then her residency in Oklahoma, and she's now practicing as an OB-GYN. The month of October, the spotlight was on the School of Health Sciences. And Dr. Nelson was wonderful to start it off, and he did. Uh, he had an open house that, um, in the evening that drew, oh, I don't know, something like 300 people. It was, it was a really fun, uh, fun night. They did tours, um, of the, um, Health Sciences Building and had entertainment and food, and it's a wonderful evening. And then the following evening, they had a dinner in the celebration of 50 years of nursing, and established an endowed, um, scholarship for, um, in, in honor of Mrs. Breedlove. And that was a wonderful evening, because some of the speakers were, um, the first, one of the first graduates of the first nursing class. Uh, and another speaker was the first director, Mrs. Margarita Barrada, who was here to speak. It was a very, very nice evening. Brought on-campus alumni, faculty, students, um, and it was just a really nice evening. Uh, in November, the spotlight was on, on the School of Math, um, Science and Technology. And Jay Phillips had been a member of my steering committee, and he had begun to plan the activities for November. Uh, Mary Jane Shan's chaired that committee and was able then to, um, do many of the things that Jay had planned to do. They started the day, um, their month with a 5K, a fun run, uh, walk that brought something like 200 or 300 children who participated in that run. And then they had an all-day, um, event that included a physics circus, a planting of mongrels, and, uh, virtual tours of the Bahia Grande, a sunset supper. Uh, and one of the tangibles that came out of that was a birding guide, a very nice, colorful, uh, birding guide of birds, um, I guess native to our campus. Really very nice. Um, in December, oh, I'm sorry, the other one in November was Dia de la Familia, which was an event that, if the steering committee talked about, "Well, you know, if we're gonna have an anniversary, it's the familia who celebrates the anniversary." So Dia de la Familia was an event for the employees of the university. Um, we prepared, um, 1,300 hamburgers, uh, and I think we served about 800 plates. Uh, all the 1,300 hamburgers were gone, so obviously some people ate more than one. Uh, but it was, it was a fun, fun day, faculty and children. Um, and Dr. Garcia did a canoe ride with her grandchildren, and I tried to get, uh, Dr. Martin to sing karaoke with me, but no pista. I did it by myself. Uh, and in December, we had Diamonds Among Us, a very nice ceremony where we honored five, um, from our community. In January, we sponsored, um, the Martin Luther King Celebration. Uh, and in February, we did, uh, the spotlight was on the, um, School of Business, and the School of Business began their month with a, uh, dinner with a keynote speaker, uh, Ms. Nina Vaca. Uh, this is a very nice event. It's over 200 people for this sit-down di- dinner. Um, and Ms. Vaca was, um, an inspiration, um, to all who heard her. She started, um, her business in her living room floor with her sister and her brother, and today, uh, enjoys a, or passed last year, an $80 million profit. Uh, now with 600 in company. She was, uh, very, um, happy to have been asked to come on our campus, and Dr. Shane is now nurturing that relationship. Uh, and they finished their month with an open house and a faculty roast, a barbecue. Um, through the faculty roast, the students were rather hesitant to roast their faculty, but there was...
One.
One who got up there and got to pay out for all the others that weren't there. Uh, and now, the month of March, the spotlight is going to be on the School of Education. And, uh, these guys have done quite a bit of planning. Uh, on March, uh, starting tomorrow, begins a symposium that features Friday night a keynote speaker, James Crawford. And this event is, um, already, we have over 300 people that are pre-registered for this. So we have an overflow crowd, and we are making arrangements to, to broadcast to another room. Because we need our friends from the local school districts. In fact, we begin the day tomorrow morning with a 10 o'clock in the morning, um, press conference and opportunity for area superintendents who are, will be here in the morning to meet with James Crawford. Now, James Crawford is President of the Institute of Language and Education Policy. And he has, um, his book on educating English learners is used as a textbook in many teacher training courses, and he has spoken before Congress on issues related to bilingual education and English, the English-only, um, debate. Um, he will speak then Friday evening, uh, where, as I said, we have over 300 people registered for that. And then on Saturday, we have an all-day symposium, uh, with a, a variety of sessions. Um, we have, uh, we have a copy of the program for that, uh, if you, um, might find time on Saturday to come, come and see those. That too is open to area school districts, and we expect a large crowd for that. Um, Dr. Robles, we have a session on medicinal herbs and remedies. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, we have Dr. Vallado who's doing a, he has made a collection of the use of Spanish saying, "bichos." The, um, uh, what do you call the, the puzzles, the, um...
Rompecabezas?
Rompecabezas. So he's gonna be talking about this. So he's, he's really compiled a wonderful presentation on that, but there's some very good sessions, and that's all day, uh, Saturday. Now, at the end of the month, during the week of March 21st through the 29th, they are planning a reading marathon. They are going to break, or they or we are going to break, the Guinness World Record for continuous reading. Yes?
Dr. Stockton will hold out if nobody else knows. I have great things.
The Guinness World Record has now, uh, accepted our, um, challenge, I believe, and the world record currently stands at 128 hours of continuous reading.
Is that like a filibuster?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're looking for readers, maybe we should cross some legislation. But, uh, this, um, uh, we want to not only break the record, but go way beyond, so that it'll take a long time to break our record, and we've set a goal of 200 hours of continuous reading. Um, there's a great deal of planning that's going on with this. We expect to put UTB, uh, on national news and, and expect to get national news coverage. Uh, Dr. Ragland and, and her crew are helping us with that. So you can expect perhaps to see us on Good Morning America or one of those, as we break the record.
Is that like, like teams or, or individual?
Yes. We need to have, we need to have continuous reading, and we can only have, um, six readers. That's all. Six readers and two alternates.
Sure.
And they read for another, for an hour, and they break, uh, they break for two, and they read for one, but they must be there all the time. The only time they can leave the room is during that one-hour break. But they must be there for the three hours, even though they are not reading. They read for one, break for two, they are not reading. They read for one, break for two, rest for one. So it's a four-hour shift. Right, yes.
Seven days.
Yes, seven days. So...
And you're looking for readers?
We're looking for, we're looking for people who can sleep very little.
I'm not up here, but I can't read all the...
Young girls are readers. Well, uh, also, that we need to videotape because we need to send...
Oh, it's pretty difficult to work.
We need witnesses, so that, I have to sign a form, because obviously we are following the Guinness, uh, rules on that. Um, in March, uh, March is, the spotlight is on the College of Liberal Arts, our largest, uh, sometimes?
April.
April. What am I doing? Okay, April. The spotlight is on the College of Liberal Arts. I'm still in the reading marathon.
You have four hours.
Uh, I'm thinking about volunteering to be a reader. Um, the College of Liberal Arts is planning, uh, several things. They've, they've had a very active committee, and I'm just listing some of the things that are, um, going to come. On April the 2nd, they have a Faculty Development Seminar. Their invited speaker is Dr. Grisham Riley, who is now a philanthropist, but he's a retired, uh, college administrator with a PhD from Yale on philosophy. And his topic is demystification of evil, so, um, interesting, um, interesting topic. Then on April the... On April the 14th, they are going to have a fair, an all-day liberal arts fair. And they've decided to look back to the 80 years of TSC. So theirs is one of those Roaring Twenties-type events. And they begin the day with the Keith Ferguson Run that Claudia, uh, Claudia, Sonia Cunningham spoke about earlier. And then throughout the day, they're having art exhibits, open house, poetry readings, uh, student rangers. Uh, and these are students from history that will be walking around the campus, giving tours about the historical buildings on campus. Uh, we also have, um, the English Department is doing walking, every department, um, magicians, the jazz musicians, um, people will be, the faculty will be dressed in period clothing from the Roaring Twenties. Uh, they, they will be dressed as flappers. There will be a flapper costume contest. It should be a really fun, fun, fun day. That is the largest college, so that, there's a lot of faculty there. Uh, there will be a Mark Twain performance, uh, to raise funds for study abroad, so I, you have a sense of who's doing Mark Twain then, for the study abroad. Um, trolley tours for alumni. They're sending letters to alumni, bringing alumni on campus, and, uh, ranging trolley tours for alumni. And they will have a, a picnic, and guess what they're serving? Coney Island dogs, hot dogs.
Great. Coney Island dogs.
And of course, and we cannot do without the cavalry and, uh, area, uh, ROTCs. And along with that, we will have an open house that's sponsored by enrollment. But also happening in April, on the 27th, is our... But also happening in April, on the 27th, is our quinceañera gala. This is the gala that is our major scholarship fundraiser. It begins, the evening begins with a performance by our madrinas who will be wearing the big pink puffy dresses. Our quinceañera is one of our very own students, the former Rogan Villa queen. And the damas and chambalines are our very own students. Our dance instructor, Zelma Mata, has choreographed a medley of traditional waltzes from quinceañeras and they've been practicing already, preparing for that performance. And then, of course, Trío Los Panchos. But each of the damas will be sponsored by a community donor. And to be a sponsor, you need to donate $15,000. Why 15? Well, quinceañera, 15, $15,000. And those funds will be benefiting endowed scholarships for students and the donor may choose the specific area that they would like for their endowed scholarship. Dr. Raglin and her group are now seeking those sponsors and last conversation with her, they're very comfortable, they feel that they have found and will have found all of their sponsors. One of the biggest sponsors, or not the biggest, but one of the first sponsors was the Skanska group. And in fact, one of their representatives is sitting in on our committee, on our planning committee. So, this should be a really, I mean, when I say gala, it really will be a beautiful gala. The quinceañera waltzes, the, the Trío Los Panchos and Carmen Lomas Garza will be in attendance to autograph posters. So, it'd be very nice. Tickets are now on sale and this is also part of the arts and entertainment season of Jacob Brown, of the Jacob Brown Auditorium. In June, we have another Diamonds Among Us happening and we are currently receiving applications for Diamonds Among Us. And I encourage you, our members of my colleagues, if you wish to submit a name, please, I am now accepting applications and the application can be downloaded from the website. July, the focus will be on the, the spotlight will be on the graduate school. They are still planning their events, but I know that one of the highlights of that celebration will be the doctoral degree that will receive its final approval in July and so the School of Education will be a part of that celebration as well. And then August and September will be our closing ceremonies. And we are considering several possibilities. One of those is the gathering of the distinguished alums over the years who would come to this one event, that's a possibility. The convocation perhaps is another one. Or maybe the unveiling of the Bustamante sculptures. So, there's several possibilities for the closing ceremony. And I just want to talk about one more project that we have that will be also a part of the closing ceremony and that is what we're calling right now the Memory Book Project, but it could be named something else. But the Memory Book Project is essentially going to document the accomplishments of the first year, of first 15 years of the partnership. This will be kind of a coffee tabletop-type book, mostly pictures, not as much narrative as pictures. And we are now in the process then of listing those accomplishments, those things that have happened in the first 15 years of the partnership for which we, we have come of age. And this, this book will be available then for our closing ceremony and available for sale as well. So, those are some of the events that are happening. I would like to emphasize that my role has been almost minimal because I have had many years of practice in delegating. And so, I've had a lot of people, a lot of people helping me on this. And as I said earlier, each school or college has really taken ownership and I'm very, very pleased with that. So, I hope to see you at our upcoming events. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do that.
The Trío Los Panchos are gonna play two nights or one?
Only one night.
One night.
Only one night. Only one night. And the tickets are...
And your date? You have to ask early to get the good ones, you know.
And we have the posters that are also available.
Thank you, Dr. Rivas. I see you've got a real busy year, so, busy year. So, thank you for the good work that you're doing for us and I think this year is gonna be something that we, University College campus can be proud of our heritage and our future because what we do in the past is certainly relevant to what we do in the future. And I think that we should all participate and enjoy and celebrate. Thank you very much.
As far as I know, we're the only university in the UT system to celebrate our quinceañera. Surely, that's another record or something.
Thank you very much. We now move to item number six and that is a board briefing on the budget amendment for the fiscal year '07 and our, Ms. Melba Sanchez will, and Charles will address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and President Garcia. I still have three more weeks. And I'm telling him I need three weeks. Included in your binders is Budget Amendment 07-003 for your consideration and approval. Budget Amendment 07-003 is in the general fund. This amendment adjusts salaries by $52,000, related taxes by $4,300, and benefits by $400. This is for organizational changes that were presented to you at the board retreat at TSC District Office. The emergency loan and medical benefit line items in the budget have been reduced to cover this increase in salaries, taxes, and benefits. In addition, the budget amendment increases fees paid to Cameron Appraisal District by $3,515. Consulting fees were reduced by a like amount to cover this increase. This budget amendment has a zero effect to the projected fund balance for the general fund. Requires your approval.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for the fiscal year '07? Moved by units and by all. I will give it to Ms. Pedro and seconded by Dr. Robles and Ms. Zimmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melba. Item number seven now, it's a resolution requesting the creation and submission of a bill relating to a fee in support of the intercollegiate athletics at UTB TSC. And Dr. Pearson will address that resolution request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall last fall, both in October and November, Mrs. Zimmerman reported to the board regarding the successful referendum which took place on November 14th and 15th to create an athletic fee of some $7 per semester credit hour. The revenue from the fee will allow the athletic program here at UTB TSC to increase its support services and to continue to grow. The fee will go into effect in the fall of 2008. The resolution for your consideration this evening asserts the district's support of Senate Bill 612 and House Bill 1505, which amend the education code to establish an intercollegiate athletics fee at UTB and describe how revenue from the fee shall be expended in accordance with the partnership agreements entered into between UTB and TSC. This resolution is consistent with other resolutions the board has adopted for similar purposes in the past, for example, the Student Union Building and the REC Center. And the staff recommends the approval of the resolution.
Okay, may I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Zimmerman.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Campiano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Pearson. We now move to bond projects, approval of the schematic designs for the library and classroom projects. Ms. Erika Mendez.
Chairman, good evening, members of the board, President Garcia. Tonight, we believe is a very special night as we reach, a very special night as we reach another important milestone in the construction project. The, in the projects funded by the bonds, we had five new construction projects and two renovation projects. Tonight, as we present the schematic designs for the library and the classrooms, we would reach the longer-waited goal of presenting all schematic designs for the new construction projects. So, we're very pleased to be here this evening. At the end of schematic design, we have sufficient information regarding the project site, the floor plans, elevations, and after this step, the architects will continue to work on details to produce construction documents and then we can begin building the projects. We took a little bit longer than expected, but as you will see tonight, it was well worth the wait. As with previous projects, the campus advisory committees and the various campus departments have been involved and given us input in the plans. Many hours were spent by Kelmanos Architects and your project managers in working with constructability, budgets, and refinement of design. The process has been guided by Broderson Associates and as I can mention earlier, they have done constructability and cost control measures on these projects. And I would like to introduce Diana Broderson Salis from Broderson Associates to give us a briefing on the budget for these projects.
Thank you. One of the last important tasks we have as a project management team is to provide you with realistic cost data and estimating at all phases of the design process, including schematic design. You may remember that at the board retreat in February, we indicated that the schematic design estimates, both from the contractor and from Broderson Associates estimators, indicated that the costs for the overall bond projects were running approximately 15% over budget. I'm happy to say this evening that through very extensive value engineering and constructability reviews with the architects, the contractors, and all the consultants at the table, we have been able to reduce that percentage to approximately seven at this time. For the professional zone, which we will be talking about today specifically, we have been able to reduce the overage from 19% to 14%. So, we're well on our way to bringing the projects all into budget. There's still a lot of work to be done and we, we continue to look at ways to reduce costs and at the same time protect your program and quality of construction. Other value-added strategies we are currently implementing include volume purchasing and schedule compression. We are currently advertising for a brick supplier to provide all the bricks for the entire bond in an effort to cut costs. There would be with buying brick at different times and the quality of construction. Another value-added strategy is schedule compression. We are working with the architects and contractors to try and compress the schedule in an effort to reduce some of the construction cost escalation that occurs as a result of the robust construction market that we currently have in the valley. The next round of estimating is at the, at the design development phase. When the drawings are much more detailed and complete, we will again facilitate another round of constructability and value engineering meetings to check our budgets and to check our costs. At this time, I would like to introduce the principals of Kelmanos Architects from San Antonio to present their schematic designs. These men do not need an introduction as the quality of their work is visible throughout your campus, at the Student Union and the LHS Building. And now you will see how they have integrated their design talents into your new library and classroom building. I am pleased to introduce Henry Munoz and Jim Stern.
I also want to say, President Garcia, members of the Board of Trustees, you've also set the Guinness Book of World Records for the happiest Board of Trustees meeting. And I hope that trend continues with this presentation. I want to start by just taking a minute to talk about our relationship because this is actually also the 80th anniversary of Kelmanos Architects. I'm sorry that Dr. Rivas left because I was gonna ask her to organize our activity. I haven't been on your campus for quite 15 years. I think I got here in about 1995 and Jim got here about 1996. But we've been on your campus for many years and I want to tell you that you are really our most admired client. You are very demanding clients at times. We don't exit every meeting with a smile on our face, but I will tell you that this is a collaboration that is about excellence. You know, good architecture isn't enough for you. Excellent architecture isn't enough for you. You want that and you want meaning too. And so, I hope that these buildings that we're presenting this evening that are a part of the further development, not only of your campus but of your mission, reflect that collaboration. I'm gonna start with the site. You know, professional zone is a very technical sounding term for what is really a village. And the buildings that we're talking about this evening are this building over here to the right, which we're referring to at this time as the small classroom building. A building over here to the left, which we're referring to as the large classroom building. And a very important building in the development, not only of this professional zone, but the entire campus, which is the new library. There were decisions that were made based on many, many conversations about the placement of those buildings because they are buildings, in particular, the library, that needs to be integrated in many ways. It has traffic, if you will, that is flowing to it from many different directions. Years and years ago, when I was the Transportation Commissioner for the state, I was involved in the development of this boulevard. We knew at that time that that boulevard served a very important place, not only in your own community, but in the way that international traffic was transported. It was, in a sense, a loop. And so, there's no question that the development of this parking lot is important, that many of the students who will be coming to three, these three buildings will be coming from that parking area. There's no question that from a visibility standpoint, when you travel along the street, how these buildings interact, not only with the existing buildings, the education complex, for example, but also how they integrate to the street. But more importantly, as the campus continues to develop, the view, for example, of this library and the way that it interacts and the way that it connects over this resaca and back now to the new development of dormitories and living villages for the students is incredibly important. And so, just to give you a reminder that you don't need of the existing architectural context that's been set for the professional zone. And also to remind you of a big idea that was talked about from the very beginning of when you all hired us for these projects. The idea, in this case, of a cathedral, but really the idea that all buildings have meaning, but some buildings are very, very special. And the way that you treat those buildings and the stories that they tell, how appropriate for a library, but the stories that they tell to people from the approach, through the experience of walking through the building and through the building's function, is different from milestone buildings and the library is a milestone building. The idea that a library, like a cathedral, has to be approached by many different ways and sometimes that approach is something that is revealed over a period of time. The library is a building on this campus that is, one day, if you continue to succeed the way you are succeeding, is going to continue to have other buildings surrounding it. And so, we had to take that into account from the very beginning of planning this building and work with it and anticipate it and also embrace the fact that it had to have a presence not only from the street, but it had a wonderful presence back through the resaca to the other side of the campus. Let me, why don't we walk through the plans really quickly? So, just very quickly to go through the plans of the library. Libraries function best when they're organized in a rectangular shape because this shape that runs from A to Z is the easiest way for people to understand collections. And so, the main function of this library's collections are organized on this side of the building with stacks running along this side of the building. And the service areas, the offices that serve the library functions, such as the circulation depth relating to these stacks. On this side of the building is an innovative idea of a portion of the building that we call 24/7. It's got an internet cafe, it is available to students for student services and student libraries, literally 24/7. Running through the building is the idea that every building in Brownsville really needs to relate to a sense of place and climate. And this breezeway gives us not only an opportunity to create a monumental feeling when you're walking in that can help tell the story of the building, but that it also creates a space that blends the indoor and the outdoor, which is so incredibly important in Brownsville. And you'll notice that the building's orientation gives us an opportunity to organize three levels of these stacks along the north. levels of these stacks along the north side of the building where the quality of light is so incredible. On the second floor of the building, the same is true. We have, again, stacks and the support spaces to support the library function. In the middle of the building, now looking back over here at the second floor, we have library resources and the areas to support it, and then a mechanical room on this side, and a monumental staircase from that first-floor rotunda up to the second floor and continuing through the third floor. Again, the idea that in order to take advantage of the northern light, the stacks and the support functions, those kind of meeting spaces will be organized in this rectangular shape. And then at this point in the building, we would have a distance learning space, a wonderful kind of, I call it a Juliet balcony, a wonderful kind of balcony that looks back over the glorieta, and then the kind of technical spaces to support that distance learning. This is the main elevation of the building, and the building takes one step of departure from the existing context of the brick architecture of Texas Southmost College, UTB, in that it has, it also relates to the tradition of Gothic architecture that exists even in your own community. It does have a monumental opening, the kind of archway that is already here on this campus, but it is done in a slightly different fashion, at a slightly different scale. There is a wonderful kind of portal that it runs across the main arcade of this building at the ground level. And of course, then, we have decided, working with administration, that the building tells a story and it ought to literally tell a story. And so we will work with a curatorial presence from the New School at Parsons in New York, who is a specialist in symbolism, to work with you all to decide what exactly is the story that we will tell on this monumentally scaled mural that will be the very front door of this library. This is the elevation that faces the resaca. You can see, in order to take advantage of the northern light, there is much more glass on this side of the building. There are different scales of arches. In fact, there's a scale of arch found in this building that you won't find anywhere on the TSC, UTB campus. That was purposely done because we not only wanted to live within the existing context, but we also wanted to say this is a building of its time and add another layer to it. This will just show you one of our favorite images out of our focus group with the administration. It shows a building that has this kind of semicircular front door at the most important axis of a plaza. Imagine this being your glorieta and this being the front of your library. This will give you an idea of an articulated brick archway, the kind that we're hoping to create in this library with wonderful doors, the kind of sense of entry of an important building. This building is important, and it should say that from the very beginning of your experience. And this is a very important building in Mexico. This, of course, is the wonderful Juan O'Gorman mural that tells the blending of the European spirit with the indigenous spirit of the Americas. And while that's not exactly the same message of this mural, this was the most wonderful example of a mural that we could find of this scale to say that when this library is built and this mural is applied to it, it is going to knock your socks off well.
Who's the guy?
I don't know. I have no... Somebody who worked at Kelmanos Architects. It looked like about four hours ago. I don't know. And this is a second image. You know, they're really, you all are very involved in architectural decisions, and I have to tell you that when people started to think about the scale of that Juan O'Gorman mural, they also wanted to break it down a little bit. And I had to tell you that I think that decision is absolutely right, that the idea that we could create a mural that wasn't quite as modern, that was a little bit more classical, that we could allow the brick to interact with the tile, I think made for a stronger building.
Who did the mural in San Antonio at the old Hemisphere?
Juan O'Gorman.
Right?
Same artist, Juan O'Gorman. If you will, what I'd like to do is I'd like to run through all three buildings, and then I'd like to get off of PowerPoint and go into a computer program that allow you to get a sense of the scale and the placement of the buildings. The large classroom building is just that. It's got classrooms involved in it that gives new options to the kind of teaching that will be available here at UTB, TSC. So on the ground floor, there is this dean's suite. There is an entry of the building, and I'll talk a little bit about the entry of the building, because this building is so incredibly important to the parking lot. The decision, if up here you were going to have this monumental entry to the library, maybe this building really needed to turn on the street and back to the boulevard in order to accept students and give them a very clear sense of where they would be walking in to this part of the campus. We have this wonderful kind of lobby space, which I'll talk about in the middle, and the building is very efficiently organized off of one corridor at both levels. Here is the idea of large classroom buildings and very flexible extra-large classrooms, I'm sorry, medium classrooms on the second floor, four of them, and that'll give you a sense of the elevation that you would see off of the boulevard. There was a discussion of creating these beautiful trellises and allowing the vegetation to grow up onto the building, because the building is long by nature. And it was also discussed that we wanted to create a new kind of entry to a building here on the campus. And so we looked at these images for the idea of a doubly scaled, arched structure that you... ...doubly scaled, arched structure that you find. This is the convento at Mission San Jose in San Antonio, very famous space. This is Mexico, Juana Juato specifically. This is Spain, the European tradition. And the idea that there is, well, arches exist on this campus, but double stacked arches don't exist anywhere in this part of the state of Texas was something that we turned into the entry element for this building. We're looking at, as we go into design development for this building, to not necessarily stick to the type of brick articulation that we've done before, but as we did on the Life Health Science Building with the idea of the Tree of Life, find a new way to turn the brick to really make it sing and create a different experience to this lobby entrance. This is the north elevation, again, a situation where the punches in the building are more vibrant because of the quality of life that comes in to the building. And here's an idea of how along that elevation, there would be brick articulation that does come from the vocabulary of the existing campus. That brings us to the small classroom building. Probably one of my favorite buildings on this campus because of the nature of the work that will be conducted in it. And so what is the small campus, a small classroom building? It is really a building that through this kind of interactive space where there will be discussions and conversations by students and faculty and invited speakers, it becomes the form or the center of the heart of this building that ties together the classroom functions on this side with the extra... on this side with the medium and the small classroom and the seminar. This building, again, while it's small, plays an important function because it begins to close in the courtyard sequence that happens along the main resaca that you find in the professional zone. This is the second floor of that building with all of the faculty offices organized along this wing. This wonderful second floor that basically stares into the forum at the ground floor and then medium, small classroom along this wing with a, can you go back for just one second? With, you begin to get a sense, then, of this exterior circulation that is happening looking out over this newly formed courtyard. This is the building as you'll experience it from the boulevard. This is the inspiration for the exterior shape of the forum, and this is the building as it faces the courtyard, again, on the north side, in this case, creating a covered porch that allows you to experience the northern light and the breeze that will pass through this in a different fashion. And of course, we would want to go back to our work at the Life Health Science Complex to look at the kind of idea of adding a layer of symbolism and meaning and decoration to the building by creating these beautiful wrought iron spaces. The buildings, actually, even though we've taken a little bit longer to get through the design process, are still on track to be open in the fall of 2009. And I think it's important to go back maybe now to a computer program and give you a sense of how all three buildings fit into the village that is the professional zone. So this is the way that you will see the buildings from the air, which you never do. And so we'll go down. And you'll begin to see the buildings as you would approach international. That's the small classroom. Can you slow down for just, what's it, this is the small classroom on the right. This is the library. Any idea that this building would not have a presence, you can see from this sketchup, it will have a magnificent presence along the boulevard. This is the large classroom building. This gives you a sense of the glorieta being completed now with these three new buildings. This is the space where the new mural will take place. That'll give you an idea, if you're just a mere human being, the scale of this magnificent entry into the library. This will give you a sense of the, can you go, can you pull around this way again? The space through the building, looking out onto the resaca beyond with this beautiful wrought iron work around the rotunda. You're now standing in the space that will have the grand staircase leading up to all three levels and back over to the rest of the campus. This will give you a sense of the building on University Boulevard, the way that most students will approach, if you stop right there. The idea, for example, that this two-story-high, double-arched space is how most students walking from the parking lot right here across the boulevard will approach the large classroom building with a real sense of the entry that is scaled in a way that's never been seen before on this campus. And this is the forum building as you travel along the boulevard, what we're calling the small classroom building, which I think doesn't have a small presence at all. And the idea that looking through the forum, you'll also be able to see back into the resaca, so the building should have beautiful vistas. So in a sense, we were trying to create three buildings that not only were in harmony with the existing context of the university and the college, but that pushed the context one level beyond. All three buildings have one element about them, in some cases, more than one element that we hope accomplishes that. All of them are symbolic in their own way, and all of them are the result, not only of our design expertise, but really the ideas that were integrated by your president, your administration, and your faculty. We hope you like them. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I hope that's a good thing.
Can you go back to the schedule and the schedule that you had up there? I guess, from a scheduling standpoint, what's going to be the sequence of construction on each of the components of those three facilities? I mean, are you talking about simultaneous?
Yes.
So groundbreaking for all three at the same time?
Yes.
Or is there library and...
No, we would like to do a professional zone groundbreaking, if possible. I think that we're already trying to schedule that. And the thermal plant. Thermal plant's part of the project.
All the projects, the drawings will be completed at the same time. And it's kind of the value they were talking about, the walls and the braves. But you bid each building separately, you would pay a premium, but if you can bid all the buildings together, the contractor can reduce their overheads because they know they have more projects, so you'll get better profit.
The library, Mr. Kama, not only with that. The three-story project's going to take longer to construct, but we're going to use that as the first one to maybe probably take the lead, because it's going to take a longer to construct. But as you mentioned, we want to try to package the projects such that will allow for better efficiency in terms of schedule, minimize the contractor's time on-site, reduce their own conditions. Those are the strategies that we're looking at in terms of proceeding towards the library, efficiency now. And then leveraging those projects with the Music Education Performing Arts Center and also childcare to kind of piggyback those projects to maximize the leverage in terms of volume and...
Well, I know there's a lot of challenges, and certainly, you know, that's going to be built around what you're going to have as a school of business and the school of education, which certainly is going to continue to operate and have business. So I just kind of wanted to get a sense of how we were going to approach it, because, I mean, you know, that building will continue to function and continue to be very, you know, just as a busy space as it is today under construction activity.
There's definitely a lot of construction starting summer from now with these projects and also the geology and the break centers. So there is going to be a lot of activity, so how we coordinate that to allow for student access to be very key in this, for all the projects.
Yeah, really locally on our site, we're going to work with the contractor and university to determine fence locations, also your fire access, all those issues, so we can make sure the contractors, where they have to cross where pedestrians are, is minimized. So we're going to work with them.
I mean, just a comment about what that's going to look like, you know? I mean, I don't think the, even though you can do the virtual survey, I don't think in the end it's going to leave us all breathless. I think that, you know, it doesn't do it justice. It's magnificent to look at there, but I can only imagine what the finished product is going to be.
Mr. Munoz, you lead the board with a tongue-tied, because, I mean, it's just so beautiful. It's like a miracle that we see developing with your expertise and skill, so I thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all, really. It's an honor to work with you all. You know, you get a, I will tell you, we work with many trustees who aren't involved in all, at all. I work with clients where I never see the president. I have projects that say bring it back to me, and the fact that you all are as interactive as you are with the real end of making an impact, a meaningful impact on students is, it's an honor to work with you all. You inspire us to do better than sometimes we do, and so we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
And when, just, I guess, one other question is, when will we begin to talk about seeing what potentially might the mural look like and involved in that process with the New York School or...
When we started talking about what the, not what the mural should say, but what the mural should be.
Right.
We really looked back at, you know, in the modern world, we've kind of gotten to the point where symbolism and decoration is a bad word sometimes, and it really was decoration of buildings in Europe, for example, was really about saying who you were at a given point in time. And so we thought, we know how to do some of that, but we don't know enough about it to place it in the right context. This group of people, however you decide, really needs to tell the story, but somebody needs to help us put it all together. And so I have suggested that there is a professor by the name of Robert Cookbride, who is a specialist in cultural symbolism in architecture, and that he would come down and work with us to set the scheme of this. All of the theming would come from this group of people, and that's the manner in which we'd like to do it. And we'll start that process immediately after you all give us approval to enter into design development. I think the idea is...
Start tomorrow then, huh?
Okay.
Tonight, the night of young?
The night of young. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along with this presentation, I do have a feedback committee report to make. And the Board Bon Advisory Committee for the Library and Classroom Projects met on Tuesday, February the 20th, to review the schematic designs that were just presented. The meeting was well-attended with representatives from the UT B T S U faculty, staff, and students, as well as community members. Also attended was trustee Mrs. Rosemary Bredeau. Ms. Melónica Mendez described the process followed to develop the schematic designs. She also discussed the involvement of the campus advisory committees as they were instrumental in the development of the plans, and the committee discussed program elements and design of the facility. The new library, as you know, will expand the areas for both online and regular reference services. It will provide more and better study areas as well as training rooms. An exciting attraction for students will be the Internet Cafe after-hours study area that will allow 24-hour access to computers in a supervised area. The building itself will be in a more central location, as you saw in Mr. Henry's presentation, that will provide an atmosphere that will be more conductive to study and work. The classroom buildings will provide much-needed state-of-the-art instructional space. More than 1,000 to 1,000 students will be served in these new facilities, and this is a step forward to providing relief to our overcrowded classrooms. We are very excited that yet two more projects are at this step of the process, and very soon we will have construction sites emerging all over the campus, since we cannot wait to get started. Also want to add that Doug Ferrier is not here today. He's our dean of instructional library. And he is so proud of this, of the committee and all the personnel involved in having his dream come true. And he wanted me to know that he wanted to be here tonight to this important event, but that he was unable to attend because of other meetings that he had to attend outside the city of Brownsville. And so I want to thank everybody in the committee involved in this meeting, and I would, at this point, I'd like to have motion to approve the schematic designs for the library and classroom projects as presented.
Okay. We've been moved by Ms. Bredeau, second by Ms. Zimmermann, Mr. Oliveira, Mr. Capirano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Non-motion carries.
I'll leave it second, I'll be up. Don't you problem with that.
There you go. I think that's the first. Thank you, Mr. Munoz, for coming to our meeting and for all the extra work that all of the architects have been involved in and that our managers are involved in, and of course, that Onika and Dr. Pearson, Dr. Martín, and all of the faculty and staff that have helped us get to this point. This is extraordinary. This is really extraordinary. And I think that picture of all three of them sitting there on that Glorieta is awesome. The kids would say, I just think it's wonderful. And it's met all of our hopes of what we might accomplish there. I am confident that from here on out, then, not that it'll be a piece of cake, but that the design work, which is the hardest part of the creative, where the creative juices have to flow and issues have to be dealt with at the same time that you can afford, so many of the issues of breezeways and sun glares and wind shifts, and all of those things have been taken into consideration. And so it's not only a beautiful building, it is well-placed, well-positioned, it is just opposed against the others in a dignified and appropriate way, and it will be an extraordinary entrance to this campus, Sunday. We thank you all.
Okay. We now go to item number, item number eight, and no, maybe that, number nine, is the construction report by Dr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, obviously, we dream big dreams on this campus, and certainly the scenes that we've just seen are aspects of those big dreams. But also, the big dreams that we dream on the campus also have their smaller dimensions as well, and I'd like to show you some of those in the construction report. In fact, a number of small projects, three projects, which add to the beauty, to the utility, and also to the temperature of our campus. The first of these is the George Truand Sculpture Garden. Sculpture Garden is nearing completion. Our staff at Physical Plant has been working overtime, and I mean that literally, overtime, early in the morning, late in the evening, on weekends, to prepare this. As you can see, the paving bricks are in. The benches are now installed. The plants begin to go in. And what a beautiful view it is, as we look around toward Cavalry and then sweeping out toward the bookstore. Shrubs and flowers are in the process of being planted throughout both in the core of the area and the periphery, and within two weeks, our fountain is going to be installed. We're on target for completion of the sculpture garden by the end of this month.
And sculptures are in process?
They'll always be in process because the sculptures come from our students.
That's right.
The next one, as you've all seen, is the pedestrian bridge, another project that's very close to completion. Construction of the bridge itself is now complete. Staining of the wood is in process, almost done. The contractor is now installing the electricity for the lighting that's going to be running along the length of the span. And it's also giving us some of the nicest views imaginable of our campus. Project will also be done in the coming weeks. For the temperature, we have the new I-Tech cooling tower. The weather didn't behave for a while, otherwise it would have been there early. Finally, good weather came, and we had to have good weather because the apparatus in front of you, the cooling tower weighs some 35,000 pounds, and getting it up to the roof of the I-Tech was no small feat. And as you see in the video, it was a very tight fit, getting it between the crane and the roofs and the palm trees. I think we made it. I'll have to ask Veronica once again if we're actually made this. This is one of the final steps in the renovation of the I-Tech thermal plant, and we hope to bring substantial completion documents before the board at your next meeting.
So this is maybe our condition's finally going to work in there?
We believe so, Mr. Oliveira.
It's been working.
And if I may, in closing, again, I'd like to thank the staff at the Physical Plant, particularly for the Truand Sculpture Garden. They have done unimaginable amounts of work. The ideas that they had, we always have designs for these projects, and that really constitutes our strategic plan, but many, many details have to be worked on the ground. Abraham Hernandez and his, and his crew, multiple, multiple details, small decisions, which ultimately brought that project together, and it's turning out into really perhaps the most beautiful corner of our campus. And that concludes the construction report.
For those that just heard the baritone voice, Mr. Oliveira's here.
The hardest-working man in the legal business.
We now move to Dr. Reski's report.
I have a couple of items to conclude our meeting tonight. We had a, we were participants in the UT System Technology Transfer Showcase in Austin, which was open, it was held at the Hilton in Austin, and it included invitations and attendance by legislators, chapter of commerce members, business industry leaders, and of course, UT system representatives. We highlighted two of our programs there, the Bahia Grande Restoration and the Gravitation Weight Astronomy Center. We were represented by Dr. Ries Colom, Dr. Mario Diaz, Dr. Jude Benavides, and Dr. Elizabeth Heiss, and also by coordinator of planned giving, Serena Pootman, our graphic designer, Eddie Woodard. And you are going to get some posters tonight showing you the display, I think they're over here, showing you the display that was there. The display is huge, and it highlighted all the possibilities for technology transfer of those two, out of those two areas. Every UT system school was represented. We got an awful lot of feedback on our, on our display, a lot of interest in the CDs that we were distributing, a lot of extra copies that we had to give out, and we'll be using this display in other areas, but it was specifically to take our place among the big boys in the UT system with our own technology transfer work. We've had a tough year in many ways, and most recently, we lost a faculty member as a difficult moment for many of us. And that was Assistant Professor of History, Dr. Gerhart Gertz, who was a very young, 48-years-old at the time of his passing. Dr. Gertz was born in Ossberg, Germany, following his graduation from high school. He served two years as an ambulance driver in the German Army. Upon his release from national service, he attended the University of Ossberg, where he received his BA. He played professional basketball and was very proud of his time in basketball until he was injured and eventually forced to undergo a career change. So he decided to go back to school. He came to the United States. He had a lifelong interest in the American West, and so he immigrated to America, studied in the American West at Northern Arizona University, where he earned a Master of Arts degree. Then he came to the university and at the fall of 2003, his lecture in social sciences, became then Assistant Professor of History. He chaired the history department's curriculum committee and was sponsor of Phi Alpha Theta History Honor Society. Dean Kanthu said that Gerhart was always had a smile, friendly comment for students and colleagues, and he brought great enthusiasm and excitement to his teaching. Gerhart is survived by his wife Cathy, who also works for us in the Office of Environmental Health and Safety, a scholarship to provide support to students who share his love of history and aspire to his professional achievements as a scholar and teacher, has been established in his name. And we had a wonderful memorial service in his honor, at which many faculty and students participated. We've had two scholarship endowments established, one by our friend, Regent Robert Estrada, in honor of his mother and father, the Carlos and Virginia Estrada Scholarship Endowment Fund. To celebrate his own birthday, he said, "Don't bring me gifts. Give donations to an endowment at UT Brown." So he had a big party in Dallas, and the benefits of that came to this endowment. The second one was for the Roberta Wood Nursing Scholarship Endowment, also a $10,000 endowment, established by Nancy Fried, a member of our nursing faculty and her father. The endowment honors Nancy's mother, also a nurse who recently passed away. We have two new scorpion chess players that you really need to hear about, because they're wonderful recruits. One of them is the second-best male player in Paraguay. His name is Axel Bachmann. He is 17-years-old. And he's an international master, which is the second-highest rank that a man can receive in chess. And he is just a few points from receiving the highest-ranking title in chess. The other one is Nadya, a woman international master, Nadya Ortiz, and she is from Colombia. She is currently the top-rated woman player in Colombia. Both learned chess very young, Axel at five, Nadya was much older, 10. And both of them are here enthusiastic and actually sought us out in many ways to come and join the work that we have here. Both of them are within points of experiencing the highest-ranking title that either a man or woman can receive in chess. In the women's division, it would be international grandmaster and the men's international master. So we have two wonderful new additions to our chess team. Bringing speakers to this campus is part of our mission, is to provide a place where provocative discussion can occur. And so this, we held such a discussion after the viewing of An Inconvenient Truth. Documentary screening was a wonderful event. The glanfalon was full of people. We had to bring in extra chairs. Folks from administrators, board members, faculty, families, many folks came to learn about this effort and to help us as we begin to think about. We have many master plans on campus. One master plan that we do not have is that of a conservationist, and that is our intent and Dr. Pearson's charge to leave. And so it began our work in a most serious way. We also had on campus university representatives from UTEP, Edelbossen, and Pan American this week. The intent and their presidents and staff, the intent is to work together to think about how we might compare our achievements and our success as, together, but as compared to more traditional universities. And as that develops, we'll keep you up to date. But performance measures are an important part of how people look at us, but often the traditional performance measures don't apply in the same way to non-traditional universities like ourselves. Our corral is headed to Ireland this month, and so we invite you on March the 7th at noon to come for their send-off. They will embark on a concert tour, as you know, and they will have the great honor of performing on Saint Patrick's Day Festival in Saint Patrick's Cathedral. I think that is so cool. They've been preparing for many months. They've had concerts all over. They had a concert at the island to raise money. They had a concert, they'll have a concert here in town at Sacred Heart Church, and we'll have a respediva for them as they go off to Ireland on Wednesday, March the 7th at noon in the Eidman Courtyard. So we invite you to come by and join us. We started the SPI faculty lectures as a way to embrace our community of South Padre Island and Laguna Madre. The first lecture was given by Dr. David Pearson. He spoke in January on his book titled KAL 007, The Cover-Up: Why the True Story Has Never Been Told. Some of you have heard that story. It's compelling, whether you hear it once or several times. Dr. Tony Knop spoke last week on US-Mexico War, its impact on the Valley and the world in which we live. Both drew capacity crowds of more than 100 SPI residents in winter Texans. Next, Dr. David Hicks. Remember, he reported to you on the snail that attacks the fish. One of our marine biologists will feature his fish-eating snails during the lecture on March the 29th. We received word today of a grand accomplishment by one of our own, and that is Dr. Charles Dameron. He has just been honored with a very prestigious appointment. Over the years, as you know, Dr. Dameron has served with excellence in many administrative roles he's held, and as you know, he is our new Vice President for Academic Affairs. You also know that Dr. Dameron's a talented scholar and poet. Now the whole state of Texas knows this as well. Dr. Dameron has just been elected to become a member of the Texas Institute of Letters, which recognizes distinctive literary achievement in Texas. He'll be inducted at their annual meeting in Dallas, which is home for him, well, his old home, on April 14th. Dr. Dameron, congratulations. And finally, we, later this month, we will hold a guest lecturer on campus, and the guest lecturer is a professor of law at the University of Houston School of Law, Michael Olivas. Mr. Olivas is the William B. Bates, you're honor mater, William Bates, distinguished Chair in Law and the Director of the Institute for Higher Education Law and Governance at the University of Houston Law Center. He is editor of the book titled Colored Men and Hombres Aquí, and the book commemorates the landmark anniversary of the case Adnambis versus Texas, which was declared just one week before Brown versus Brown of Education ruling. It was a first, it was a case first to be tried by Mexican-American lawyers before the US Supreme Court. The case argued discriminatory state jury selection and trial practices, but it has been cited for many other civil rights precedents in the intervening 50 years. If you don't know Michael Olivas, you need to make sure you come to this one. You will be entertained and a learned student of the law by the time this lecture is over. He's a brilliant scholar and a marvelous speaker. He will be here then on Tuesday, March 16th, at 6:00. He will be here then on Tuesday, March 16th at 6:00 PM in Sette Lecture Hall, and, and-
March 27th?
March 27th. I'm sorry. March 27th, Tuesday night at 6:00 PM in Sette Lecture Hall. He will attend my class first, the leadership class, and our students will have a time to be with him a little bit before. But this was a case in which, for the first time, the attorneys argued that if there were no Mexican-Americans on the jury, a Mexican-American was not getting a trial of their peers. And the, the story is so fascinating because as this became known, that this was going to be the premise of the case they were going to try and prove, people in the town took down signs that had said, "No Mexicans here," and so they were finding, they were going to have to use circumstantial evidence to prove this classification or this category. They were worried because these signs were all being taken down, and their evidence was, was disappearing, until they went downstairs in the courthouse to use the restroom. And it was in a restroom, but as they approached the hallway, that they found a sign over one of the restroom doors that said, "Colored Men and Hombres Aquí." They, they, they took a picture of the sign, and the, the rest then is history. And so he will be talking about the arguments in the case, the precedent that it set, and really the context of having to argue that case in that county in those days. And it's fascinating book, his book that we've ordered, and it's at the bookstore for sale, and he will be signing copies that evening. So we're very, very honored to have Mr. Olivas that night. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mary. So post-meeting day for the board is April 26th, May 31st, June 21st, August 30th, and September 27th. Are there any other announcements coming this time? If none, then I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.